Good evening and thank you to the Board of Education for making time to recognize the achievements of our students.
John, can you hear me?
Turn it on. Nope. How about now? There we go. Good evening and thank you to the Board of Education for making time to recognize the achievements of our students. Tonight I have the honor and privilege to present to you thirty-two of Centerville High School's best and brightest. These students have received special recognition for their performance on the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And last year, I just want to let you know, one point six million juniors from twenty-two thousand different high schools across the nation took this test. And only sixteen thousand seniors were named as National Merit semifinalists for receiving the highest index, selection index scores on the critical reading math and writing skills tests. Students being recognized tonight make up less than one percent of the students across the nation, so it's a really high honor for them. The thirty-two students that I'm going to introduce you to tonight are all eligible for significant scholarship money, and they're going to be recruited by the best colleges across the country. At this time, I'd like to introduce the National Merit Commended Scholars for recognition. Benjamin Earhart. And I know some of the students might not be here because there's a lot of activities always going on here at Centerville High School. Aaron Brook. Spencer Christian. I know he's in activity right now. C. Dane. Noah Evans. Brooke Greenlee. Nathan Hart. Donald Helfrich. Melody Markert. Jesse Melville. Rebecca Seiler. And Amy Nguyen. Congratulations to the National Merit Commended Scholars. And now I'd like to introduce the National Merit semifinalists. Mary Ann Kingring. Aditya Mahesh. Cheaton Nambyar.
Next on our agenda is Board of Education Report.
Good evening. With the election coming up, the House has been a little quiet, but I knew that we would have students here, so I thought I would just, for students' sake and the sake of our peers, just throw out what is currently on the docket. Legislative activity is slated to ramp up following the November election and continue into mid-December. At this point, legislators are scrambling to finish their bills. Those who will not be returning are looking to make their mark in legal legacy. So currently on the docket, we have a House Bill 474, which continues to deal with the college credit plus program. House Bill 410 deals with truancy and attendance. House Bill 85, this requires each district to include annual age-appropriate instruction in child sexual abuse prevention grades K through six and age-appropriate instruction in sexual violence prevention grades nine through twelve. House Bill 383 requires one half, would require one-half unit in instruction in economics and financial literacy. House Bill 425 deals with student religious expression in schools. And Senate Bill 3 is a mandate release. This bill would provide flexibility for mandates for high-performing school districts. If anybody would like to meet with me after the meeting if you're a student, I'd be happy to review any of these House bills with you. You can take it back to class. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing the public, at this point, before the Board votes on any matters this evening, we'd like to invite anyone who would like to address the Board to do so. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium, tell us your name, and talk about anything that involves Centerville City Schools. We ask that you leave your remarks to three to five minutes. If you'd like to speak longer at a Board meeting, we ask that you contact the superintendent and ask if you place on the agenda for a future meeting. Members of the Board will listen to anyone who wishes to speak, but we will not engage in dialogue with the speakers. If anyone here this evening or watching on television would like to talk with any or all members of the Board, please call or email the district office, and you can get our contact information. We are all happy to discuss Centerville City Schools with any members of the community. You can use it by phone, email, or in person.
Hello, Centerville Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Reggie Boyle, and I have a daughter who attend, who is a freshman at CHS. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge that the issue I'm bringing to your attention today may seem minor in comparison to many of the other issues you grapple with on a regular basis. But however minor it may seem, it does affect many families, including ours. In order to graduate from Centerville High School, at some point, every student must take a total of two semesters of physical education, or PE. However, students who play school sports can apply for a PE waiver. This means that if a student participates in any CHS athletic program for two full seasons, they have essentially fulfilled their PE requirement. Many students are thankful for this option. Not having to take PE classes during their regular school day frees up a whole slot in their schedule for other classes that they need in order to reach their academic goals. And yet, they're still getting their exercise through playing their favorite sport. The current policy states that in order to be eligible for the PE waiver, the student must attend ninety percent of all athletic practices, games, and meets. In general, this is a reasonable policy. Students who don't attend regularly don't deserve the PE credit. The only problem with this policy is that practices and meets continue to be held regularly during school holidays and breaks. For example, during the two-week-long winter break coming up at the end of December. If a family chooses to travel during that time, the student will miss the eight practices that occur during those two weeks. For a typical sport, there are a total of about fifty-six practices and meets during the season. So if you do the math, missing only the practices during winter break automatically puts the student at under ninety percent attendance, and therefore, the student will be denied their PE credit. To put this into perspective, consider the student who never gets sick, never misses a day of school, never misses a practice because of another activity, never skips practice to study for an exam, but the student decides to go spend Christmas with their grandparents on a different continent. That student will fail the ninety percent attendance requirement and will be denied their PE credit. So a policy that seemed fair at first glance now seems unreasonably harsh. I thought it would be interesting to compare the amount of physical activity done by a student in PE class versus a student athlete. So real briefly, here's the math. A student in PE class attends class Monday through Friday for fifty-four minutes each day. That adds up to about seventy-nine hours of modest physical activity during one semester. A student on the swim team, by contrast, attends practices three days a week for two hours each, plus meets on Saturdays that last about three hours. In total, that's about one hundred sixteen hours of intense physical activity during the entire season. Clearly, our student athletes are working harder than those in PE class and deserve to take their winter break off, just like their PE counterparts, without facing consequences. You might have guessed that my daughter is facing a dilemma right now. After spending three months planning a holiday trip for us to go see extended family and being super careful about the dates such that our kids wouldn't miss any school, do we just cancel our trip and eat the costs? Or do we go on our trip anyway and find a different way for her to get her PE credit? Being an honors student going for the honors diploma, it is surprisingly difficult to find space in her daily schedule to squeeze in two semesters of PE class. So despite being a physically active kid who loves sports, she's left without a good option. Many of you must be thinking, well, okay, sure, the policy says ninety percent attendance, but I'm sure if you just go talk to the coach and explain your situation, surely he'll understand and cut you some slack. Unfortunately not. The coach, while being a perfectly reasonable person, says that it is a strict policy that must be enforced in order to be fair to all athletes and in all sports. I talked to Mr. Dement, the athletic director. Great guy, we had a pleasant conversation, but he said there's nothing he can do as the policy comes directly from the school district. I also discussed it with the principal of my child's unit, Mr. Durnbaugh. He was also very understanding and took my issue to a meeting of all the high school principals, but the response was the same. The policy comes from the district, and they don't have the authority to change it. So I've come to you today. I'm merely advocating for a small amendment or a clarification to the existing policy, such that practices, games, and meets that occur during a school holiday or break are not counted towards the ninety percent attendance calculation. I know that you are not intending to discuss this matter today, which is fine, so my request to the Board is to please think about it and add this to your agenda the next time you convene in private. If you wish, I'm happy to present at your next meeting or answer any questions. And then after some discussion, I would ask the Board to vote on my proposed amendment. And regardless of that vote, or the results of that vote, my daughter and I will respect your decision and together figure out the best way forward for her to get her PE credit. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nikki Lee, and I'm, oh, here, it's not better. My name is Nikki Lee, and I have a, well, my daughter just recently graduated, and my son is now a freshman here at Centerville. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My daughter recently graduated, my son is now a freshman. Both of my children have been very active in various programs over the last few years. And as you already know, Centerville offers many focal opportunities for our students. I am so pleased to say that my children have greatly benefited from these programs since they first began in grade school through middle school and then finished in high school. Both Kitty and Jackson participated in extracurricular choir programs such as Middle School Honors Choir and the acapella groups after school, and now forte, which I'm sure you've all heard of, right? Personally, I'm very grateful for the incredible choir program. These choirs provided outlets for my children, priceless opportunities, and the confidence to help them navigate through middle school and high school. I honestly cannot imagine what life would have been for them without singing and being part of such an amazing experience. This brings me for the reason I'm here this evening. We have nine various groups that have grown and flourished due to the creativity and vision of our choral director, Ben Spalding. He has led the symphonic choir to superior ratings year after year and ported to the best high school acapella group in the nation. Actually, they're international champions, which is pretty cool. Ben has developed the Middle School Honors Choir to help develop the talent a little further and to keep them interested in singing through high school. And he has also found the need to start two extracurricular acapella groups due to the popularity and success of forte. Ben has accomplished all of this as the sole choral director. As these programs have grown, so has the work that ensures each ensemble gets the attention and direction they deserve. The choral program is in need of an assistant director who can help him continue to successfully develop opportunities for our children in the arts. In order to sustain the long-term success of the choral program, we need to make the additional investment. Many other choral programs in other high school systems have a similar number of choral programs. However, they all have more than one director, and none of them have our success. I'm concerned that the stress of the choral program cannot be sustained, the success, I'm sorry, of the choral program cannot be sustained long-term as it is today. I'm coming to you as a parent, as a concerned parent, that I want to ensure this program continues to thrive, that current and future students are provided the opportunity to be creative, to excel in song, and to benefit from Centerville's amazing choral program. We are grateful for the school board's continued support of our choral program. I know that this is very important to you as well. I request that you consider approving the creation of the position of Assistant Director of the Choral Program, so that we can maintain a choral program that represents Centerville High School's continued excellence. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Centerville City School Board of Education. Thank you for giving me your time to speak to you tonight. My name is John Lee. I reside at 401 Gwinnett in Centerville, and I'm a 1990 graduate of Centerville High School and a resident of Centerville since 1983. My son, Jackson Grimalda, has been part of the Middle School Honors Choir for the last two years under the direction of Ben Spalding. This program has allowed my son to gain confidence, make new friends, express his artistic side, and gain multiple talents beyond the school walls. Beyond my son's gains, hundreds of other Centerville Middle School students have participated in the Middle School Honors Choir and has allowed these students to find a new outlet into our wonderful choir program that Centerville has to offer. Each student has participated in the Middle School Honored Choir, comes away with a sense of teamwork, self-accomplishment, and a pride in their young life. Many of these middle school students have gone on to participate in high school theater, choir, and acapella groups. To be able to shake the mind of our youth in the middle school allows them an easy transition into the arts at Centerville High School and beyond. Just think, many of these young students will become our future music or art teachers or even possibly a director in our school district. But to continue to allow these students this great program, us, parents, are asking for the Board's help. Since Ben Spalding is the director of the Middle School Honors Choir, his time is split between nine different choir or acapella groups throughout our school district. Ben is overseeing hundreds and hundreds of students, both at the middle school and high school level, and Ben has just bred two of them. We are so lucky to have different, to have nine different choir or acapella groups in the Centerville schools, but to continue to make this happen, we will need the Board's assistance. We parents are asking for one full-time assistant for the 2017-18 school year for Ben Spalding. This added staff member will give our school district the ability to continue to grow these programs and allow Centerville to have one of the best art choir programs in the state, if not in the nation. Thank you so much for your time tonight, and continue our path to greatness in our arts and choir programs at Centerville.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Treasurer's Report for October 24, 2016. This first slide shares a couple pieces of financial information about the general fund for the last three, for the first three months of the fiscal year. For revenue or real estate property tax collection will continue to be a category that we'll have to watch. The first of the two collections this year for 2016-17 was almost flat, and we were, we are expecting a one percent increase in that collection for the entire year. To get the forecasted one percent increase that I projected, we'll need to collect an additional $600,000 in the second settlement that will not be finalized until April or May, which is very close to the end of the fiscal year. After speaking with the county auditor's office again about this, I'm still very optimistic that we will reach the one percent additional projected increase in the forecast, mainly due to all the new construction and growth that is going on in our community. But I just felt it was necessary to share that as we continue to monitor that category this fiscal year. Expenses are on target with the budget for the fiscal year, and that includes in line with the forecast as well. Moving into the benefits area briefly, this slide shows the increases in self-funding to our medical insurance beginning in 2012. 2012, that's when we started self-funding our insurance programs. Premiums increased 4.4 percent that year in 2012, 2012, excuse me. And then in 2013 was a 7% increase. And after those two years, we built up a decent reserve in our insurance fund, and we were able to accomplish a zero percent change in 2014 and a zero percent change in 2015 as well, followed by a modest increase in our premiums in 2016 at 2%. I believe that going self-funded has been very good for us financially since doing that in 2012. And then now looking into 2017, our insurance premiums changed in 2000, or January 1, so the calendar year is fast approaching. We are looking at a zero percent to a maximum of 2%, and we hope to make that decision no later than the work session in November. So again, very good since we have started doing that with our insurance programs. Employees do share a part of that premium cost. They pay fifteen percent of the premium, and the district pays eighty-five percent. So this really has helped stabilize our insurance program throughout going self-funded and the way we're currently doing it. So that's all I really have for this slide. A little bit of information there. The next slide, finally, I'd just like to share that the auditors did arrive in our school district on October 12, 2016, and began reviewing our fund and cash records along with many other things that they, that they review first. And then they will follow up by reviewing the comprehensive annual financial report, which is called our CAFER. This is a document that Treasurer's Office produces annually, and it also has to be audited by the state. The completion of the audit is expected to end, the end of December, and we're very much looking forward to that. And the final report should be released by the auditor's office sometime in February 2017. It's really all I have for this evening, concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Mitch, I just want to just sort of tell on the medical insurance increase. It's important for everyone to know that by self-funding, since we started in 2012, again, we've seen zero, zero, two percent, maybe two percent this year. That is compared to ten, fifteen, twenty percent increases, which we were seeing all throughout those years, as well as what's going on in the general population right now. It's important for the public to realize this is saving them as taxpayers, taxpayers thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that come off the expense part of our, our money. So even though they see these numbers, they look at, when you compare them to what most people are paying in business, this is a tremendous savings by getting it self-funded.
Very good point, Dr. Rohr. It really has stabled our medical insurance program.
Anything else, anybody?
Thank you, Mitch. Board will now take up a number of items to vote on. We're going to move through these very quickly, we always do at this point in time, but I want everyone to understand who's here and watched this on television, that we're not giving these matters less attention than they deserve. We've considered all these matters prior to tonight based on written materials given to us by the school district staff or that work sessions that we've had. So we'll start with Treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the September 2016 financial statements, including the monthly financial report, fund activity report, appropriations, general funding spending report, general fund summary, general fund summary comparison, and purchase orders included in Statement Number Seven approved by the administration, quote, "then and now," close quote, certified by the Treasurer and supported by Board Resolution totaling $92,315.36.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Call or roll, please.
Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mr. Evans.
Forever.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings, the September 26, 2016 regular meeting, and the October 17, 2016 special meeting work session.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Call or roll, please.
Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mr. Evans.
Yes. Superintendent's recommendations, we'll take the schedules A through G, all as one. The superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status for the certificated persons listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff persons listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the persons listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts for extra duty assignments. Superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the persons listed on Schedule B for the reasons on the dates given. And the superintendent recommends the reemployment of non-renewed personnel listed on Schedule G for the reasons and on the dates given. So moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Call or roll, please.
Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mr. Evans.
Yes. Consider approving the 2017-18 school calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Mrs. Osterhage.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
And Mr. Evans.
Yes. The Centerville City School District Board of Education hereby gives notice, in accordance with Section 3309.345 of the Ohio Revised Code, that Tom Castleman, who is currently employed by the Board of Education as the attendance and resource teacher, will be retired. retired and seeking reemployment with the Centerville School District in the same position following his service retirement. The board will hold a public meeting on the issue of reemploying Mr. Castleman at a meeting to be held on Monday, November 21st, 2016, at 6:30 PM, PM, in the School of Possibility Meeting Room located at 111 Virginia Avenue, Centerville, Ohio 45458. Since, no, we have to, do we have to prove there? We just, we just. Since the meeting has gone kind of quickly, I noticed we have a lot of students here. We thought we'd have each of the students that's here come up and speak briefly in front of the meeting, tell us why you're here and what you like about the school board. Who'd like to go first? I'm just kidding. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, we're going to go into executive session now upon motion, second, and a vote to discuss employment of an employee of the school district. We will not vote on anything while executive session, and when we come out of the executive session, the only thing that we'll do is adjourn. Put up a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call or roll, please.
Mrs. Osterhage?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Annie Self?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
And Mr. Evans?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight.